This meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. At this time, I ask that everyone in attendance please silence their electric devices and phones. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. At this time, I'm asking everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now proceed with our awards and recognitions. Mrs. Holtz.
The Virginia, okay. The Virginia Pro Start Invitational. Imagine only having one hour to create an appetizer. Hmm, an entree or a dessert. And imagine having only two butane burners to complete that challenge. No, it was not a challenge on the TV hit show Top Chef, but it easily could have been. It was a challenge that earned tonight's first honorees a first-place team award in the Virginia Pro Start Invitational, a culinary competition sponsored by the National Restaurant Association. Let's meet our top chefs. Corintha Carey from Kempsville High School. Dakota Yarnell from Green Run High School. India Ayala and Ashi Gan, both from Callum High School. This team takes culinary arts two classes at the Technical and Career Education Center, or TCC, no, TCE. They created a menu consisting of, number one, a salmon, oh my gosh, a salmon caviar appetizer with a deconstructed shrimp salsa, yum, an entree of moho skirt steak with chimichurri sauce, spiced yuca chips, a side of fresh corn dressed with chipotle mayo, and crumbled fresh queso, and a dessert of whipped blood orange cheesecake with a mango raspberry reduction. In addition, as part of the challenge, they had to successfully price out the entrees for a fictitious restaurant menu, keeping expenses and profits in mind. Congratulations to our own top chef.
Let's now meet students who won first place honors at the recent Future Health Professional State Champion, State Competition. I'm going to ask that you hold your applause because there's a short descriptive paragraph for each student and we won't hear those remarks, okay? So I know it's tempting, but. First is Gloria Carlos, student at Princess Anne High School, who's also in the dental assisting program at TCE. Gloria knows a multitude of dentistry terms, including, oh dear, maxilofacial surgery and prosthetics. Can you guess in what event she won first place? Dental terminology, of course. Congratulations. Katrina Adams from Tallwood High School. She too attends TCE. If you have a nutrition question, Katrina likely knows the answer. She was the first-place winner in the nutrition event, where she analyzed and evaluated the relationship between nutrition and disease, as well as how nutritional needs change through one's life. Excellent job. Our next first-place winners are students enrolled in Bayside High School's Health Sciences Academy. Kareen Guthala. Kareen has a very good memory recall. He won first place in the medical reading event, which requires students to read five selected medical books and then take a 50-question test based on the medical stories. Kareen's flawless recall earned him first place. Well done. Lanice Jackson, first place in human growth and development. To win, Lanice first had to study a series of professional resources and then take a 100-question exam to showcase her medical knowledge on this topic. Nicely done. Mandana Ravinpak, first place in medical law and ethics. In this event, she was challenged with applying ethical and legal terms related to medical law, ethics, and even bioethics. Well done. Kimberly Spear, first place in medical terminology. Kimberly can probably tell you the medical term for someone's stomach growling, which is borbo rhygmas. Congratulations to our medical terminology expert. You're killing me, guys. Amen Sullivan won first place in medical spelling, and it wasn't easy. First, Amen had to pass a 50-item test in order to advance to a spell-down similar to a spelling bee. At the conclusion, he was the last person standing. Excellent job. Those were the individual winners. Next, our first-place team awards. Lauren Aspirin, Ashna Deshpande, Tamara Thang, Caitlin Garcia, Jada Ray, and Lauren Wolf won first place in the public health team event by creating a dynamic and effective presentation about this year's topic, which was preventing teen dating violence. Excellent job. Grayson Punzalan, Reagan Reeves, and Matthew Villanueva won first place in creative problem-solving. Round one of this event consisted of a written test to evaluate the team's understanding of the processes and theories behind problem-solving. Round two required them to solve a potential problem affecting health. Finally, they had only eight minutes to persuade judges that theirs was the best solution. Nice work. Aleah Carter Hernandez and Sophia Pickett won first place in forensic medicine. Similar to the TV show CSI, these students were first presented with a case they had to analyze before sharing their conclusions with a panel of judges. Case solved, it's evident they were the best team. And finally, Kira Myers, Tara Sellers, and Alyssa Ware won first place in the Medical Innovations Team Challenge. They had to create a 90-second video showcasing how they improved upon modified or updated an existing medical innovation and then defend it before a panel of judges. Their innovation was to create a self-administered test that can be an early detection for cervical cancer, something that would be extremely helpful in third-world countries where there's not much access to medical facilities. I would add to here as well. Great job. Congratulations to all this year's winners.
Our final recognition of the evening is, oh yes, oops, sorry. All right. Our final recognition of the evening is for an educator who was named the Virginia State Reading Association Teacher of the Year, Diane Marks from Creed's Elementary School. Ms. Marks, a third-grade teacher who graduated from Virginia Beach schools, was selected from amongst all of the honorees named by each of the 15 reading councils in Virginia. Although she is thrilled to be honored, she is even more excited about the doors that reading opens for students. As she stated, "I think reading provides opportunities daily that go beyond the classroom. Through reading, we find joy, knowledge, and power." Very well said. That is one of the reasons she was named Virginia's Reading Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Marks. Mrs. Chairwoman, this concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Congratulations to all our students and our Reading Teacher of the Year. Dr. Spence?
Nobody ever wants to.
We look forward to hearing the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. You know, as they're walking out, I think it's appropriate for us to take just a second to acknowledge what an incredible sign that is about the opportunities that our students here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools have. And I want to especially shout out the folks, the hard-working people who I know are here tonight, from the Career and Technical Education Center and also from the Bayside High School Health Sciences Academy. I know we had the coordinator and the principal from Bayside here. And just congratulations to them for their incredible hard work and what a great testament to the opportunities our kids have. Now, I'm excited this evening to present to you again the five things that you need to know about Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Number one, earlier today, I announced the formation of a Blue Ribbon Panel on School Safety and Security. This panel is going to be analyzing VB CPS's current security practices and procedures and provide the board with recommendations on how to best enhance the division's work. This panel will include representatives from the Virginia Beach Police Department, NAS Oceana, the city's Office of Youth and Child Services, the VB CPS Office of Student Support Services, and the Office of Safety and Loss Control. So to be clear, our schools are very safe places for our students and staff members and our guests, but this panel will help us take an objective look at our comprehensive security program and identify ways we can enhance and evolve our work in light of changes in our society. I want to say that I'm grateful to VB PD Chief James Severa and Captain Chad Vincellet from NAS Oceana, who joined me in announcing this panel today. Both of them expressed their support and commitment to working with us to leverage all available resources to make sure our schools continue to be safe and welcoming places for our students. And I look forward to learning more about those recommendations that this incredible team of experts will bring forward. At number two, it's good to know that the Advanced Technology Center will soon be a bit more advanced. The ATC received a $37,000, $500 grant from the Virginia Department of Education, which will be used to help upgrade the center's CNC system with CAD and computer-aided manufacturing coating capabilities. This is one of just 16 high schools and technical centers in Virginia to earn this CTE Competitive Innovation Program Equipment Grant. It's in the area of high-demand and fast-growth industry sectors. In awarding the grant, the head of the state's CTE and adult education program said that the program at the ATC will, quote, "serve as a model for providing students with classroom experiences that are relevant to the needs of our 21st-century workplace." So congratulations to the Advanced Technology Center. Next, at number three, the Class of 2032. We are ready for you.
Wow.
On Tuesday, you think about that, Mr. Edwards, on Tuesday. He said, wow. On Tuesday, April 24th, we are holding our annual kindergarten registration and orientation event, which will take place at 9:00 a.m. at all of our elementary schools. Parents of children who will be five years old on or before September 30th are invited to attend this event, which includes an open house for future students and their parents, tours of the school, and an overview of our kindergarten programs. Students will also get to experience a school bus ride and meet with kindergarten teachers while parents are able to fill out necessary registration paperwork. Now, of course, parents can register their child for kindergarten anytime leading up to the school year in the child's school office, but this event really does help give a full introduction to the kindergarten experience for both students and their parents. For more information on this, please contact the Department of School Leadership at 263-1088. At number four, if you're looking for a new job and you've ever thought about joining the team here at VB CPS, then you are in luck. Job seekers can attend the school division's Career Expo, which will happen next Saturday, April 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Landstown High School. At the Career Expo, representatives from a variety of offices, departments, and schools will be available to speak with attendees about opportunities to work as classroom teachers, tradesmen, counselors, custodians, bus drivers, school administrators, cafeteria staff, teacher assistants, office associates, and much, much more. So those interested in attending should visit www.vbschools.com/hr, where they can also find a list of current job vacancies, job descriptions, and other employment information for our school division. For additional information about the expo, please contact our office, our Department of Human Resources, at 263-1133. Finally, at number five, let me take this opportunity to encourage everyone to make a stop by Lynn Haven Mall before the end of the month in order to catch the art of being a military child exhibit. This is the sixth year that we've partnered with Lynn Haven Mall, as well as our military installation school liaison officers for JEB Little Creek Fort Story and Naval Air Station Oceana. This exhibit features VB CPS student artwork that depicts artists' reflections of themes related to being a military-connected child. I don't know about you all, but this is truly one of my favorite exhibits each year. And tomorrow night, I'll have the honor of joining First Lady of Virginia Pam Northam, as well as service representatives from the Army, Air Force, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and National Guard and Reserve to recognize student award winners at the exhibit. That said, anyone can stop by and see all of the more than 700 entries on display through April 29th. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We'll start with Colleen Stevens and then Brian Kerwin.
Thank you.
Hi. Hopefully, you remember me from last time. I was speaking about class rank. My daughter, just to repeat, she graduated from Princess Anne with a 4.5 GPA, 1490 on her SAT. She was also a governor's school student. When she got her acceptances to college, she did not receive any scholarships, so we called the two schools and asked why she did not receive a scholarship. We were told that she had not been in the top 10% of her class, so they did not even consider her for a scholarship. Graduating from Princess Anne with 4.5, you may not be in the top 10% of your class. Almost any other high school in Virginia Beach, she would be valedictorian. If she had been valedictorian, she would have gotten scholarships to all the schools she applied to. We then turned around and asked them, if class rank had not been included on her transcript, would she have been considered for a scholarship? Their answer emphatically was yes, they would have considered her if it had been left off. 60% of the high schools across the country no longer include class rank on their students' If we know that class rank is impacting our students in this way, then why do we continue to supply class rank on our students' transcripts? I know the school board's thoughts on going to the Latin system in four years, but my question is, why wait four years and penalize Virginia Beach students for the next four years when they are compared to students across the rest of the country when it comes to college acceptance and college scholarships? As Carolyn Rye stated her reasons for changing the class rank in her guest column for the Virginia Pilot, she stated, "In such a competitive setting where exceptional academic performance is common, ranking could be deceiving. Large differences in class rank existed despite minuscule differences in GPAs. Now, how meaningful is a class rank of 35 for a student with a 4.6 GPA? Again, why are we waiting four more years?" Another statement, "Personal interest, a love of learning, a college and career readiness goals drive the overwhelming majority of students at all achievement levels. Such factors, rather than worries about class rank, ideally should drive students in their course selections." Again, why are we waiting four years and having four more years of our students impacted? Carolyn also stated, "If abandoning class rank can lessen stress for students and minimize health competition," a point driven home by our school administrators, "we should consider it. Why wait four more years? Other schools' divisions, Fairfax County, dropped their class rankings over a decade ago. Why wait four more years? After the schools in the U.S. no longer report class rank, why wait four more years? If you are still not convinced that this is an issue for Virginia Beach school students and you are not ready to go to the Latin system for four more years, then at least make it an option for students to leave class rank off of their transcripts. My youngest daughter will be graduating next year from Princess Anne. She's also a governor's school student. Leaves the house at 7:00 in the morning, gets home at 10:00 at night. She has a 1510 on her SAT and a 4.5 GPA. She will now face the same impacts as her sister if this is not an option to not include class rank on high school transcripts." Thank you.
Good evening, school board members, and a special good evening to my neighbor. My partner in the signs. First, I do want to say I have great respect for what all of you do to serve Virginia Beach. I know very up close in some cases how it is often a thankless and unrecognized job. It's a sacrifice to serve. And it seems more and more today, you get more slings and arrows than the average citizen for standing up and leading, and I applaud you for that. I also want to commend our superintendent for winning the 2018 Virginia Superintendent of the Year. The school system wrote a nice press release, and the media covered it. It's hard to miss the accolade. Kudos, sir. We celebrate Teacher of the Year awards. Just this past week, the Pilot covered Virginia Beach's Kenneth Poe of Oldhamit, owed donation as one of the top three music and arts national music educators of the year. The school system loves getting awards and recognition and to the point of proclaiming them on the website for their press releases. I pulled up the press releases, and here's some of the titles I found. VB CPS again earns Energy Star Partner of the Year Award. VB CPS is recognized with Design Achievement Award. VB CPS receives 2017 Learning Council Digital Curriculum Strategy Award. VB CPS named 2017 Certified Green School Division. And these are only since December. Tonight, you recognize the Virginia State Reading Association Reading Teacher of the Year. How contradictory would it be to tell students that their academic accomplishments are not only less important than these, but not even worthy of recognition by eliminating valedictorians and salutatorians? I had a moment that should scare everyone. I opened my Virginia Pilot this morning, and I agreed with Roger Chesler. But he did have a point. That a school system that is chock-full of competitions and accolades, we saw some tonight. Everything from top design to top technology to top teacher, telling top students their accomplishments are so unimportant as to be robbed of recognition is hypocritical and wrong. If awards are laudable for teachers and the school system, they are equally laudable for these top students. I've heard many of you say, quote, "We're here for the kids." Let's remember that. Let's keep those recognitions. Thank you.
Madam Chair, those are all the speakers that I have signed up for the hearing on agenda items.
Thank you. The chair will now entertain a motion to approve our minutes from the March 27th meeting. The motion is made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Ms. Weems. The voting board is open. The minutes of the March 27th meeting have been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting this evening. The motion is made by Mrs. Manning, seconded by Ms. Holtz. Voting board is open. The agenda has been adopted. We have two resolutions in the consent agenda this evening. The first resolution is for the National Month of the Military Child, and the second one is for the National Volunteer Month. Mrs. Manning will read the first resolution. Mrs. Manning?
National Month of the Military Child, April 2018. Whereas approximately 17,510 students enrolled in Virginia Beach City Public Schools are military-connected, with the majority having at least one parent serving on active duty or in the reserves of the armed forces. And whereas these military-connected youth and their families have unique needs and face distinct challenges due to high mobility, lengthy deployments of one or both parents, and the stress of loved ones serving in times of combat, and whereas the school division reaffirms its commitment to providing support, resources, and enriching programs to enhance the educational and experiences of military-connected youth. And whereas the Virginia Beach City Public School Board's Compass to 2020 strategic plan creates opportunities to actively engage military-connected parents and families in supporting student achievement and outcomes for success. And whereas, April has been recognized by the Department of Defense since 1986 as the Month of the Military Child. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes April as the Month of the Military Child, and be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all staff to initiate, support, and participate in special activities to recognize the exceptional role and unique sacrifices our military-connected youth make in our nation's best interest. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. The next resolution will be read by Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. National Volunteer Month, April 2018. Whereas volunteering and community service are integral parts of our national life, and whereas volunteerism mobilizes resources from our entire community, and whereas volunteers are vital members of the education team who willingly give of their time and talents to support student development and achievement, and whereas more than 23,000 volunteers recorded 334,000 volunteer hours to our schools last year with an estimated value of $8 million. And whereas purposeful partnerships with parents in the community are identified as a priority in the division's strategic framework compass to 2020. And whereas April is recognized as National Volunteer Month, now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the Month of April as Volunteers and Education Appreciation Month, and be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all staff to participate in appreciation activities designed to recognize school system volunteers, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the board.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Item B under the consent agenda is the 2018-2019 Local Plan for Special Education. Item C in the consent agenda contains the recommendation of the general contractor for Landstown and Ocean Lakes High Schools floor finish replacement. And also included in item C is an air unit for First Colonial High School and the cafeteria rooftop unit replacement for the Technical and Career Education Center. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. Holtz has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Riggs. The voting board is open. The consent agenda has been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the personnel report. Motion is made by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Ms. Riggs. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. Personnel report has been approved. For the information part of our meeting, our first item is Technical and Career Education Carl Perkins School Year Grant.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the board, Dr. Spence. I'm Dr. Sarah Lockett, Director of the Office of Technical and Career Education. And as a requirement of the grant, we are here tonight to present for the board's information the proposed local plan for budgeting expenditures for the Carl D. Perkins funding. The plan presented for consideration this evening was approved for presentation to the school board by our General Advisory Council for Technical and Career Education. Under the provisions of the Perkins Act, federal funds are distributed to local school divisions by the Virginia Department of Education. In order for Virginia Beach to participate in the grant program, an application for Perkins funding is made through the Career and Technical Education Management System before April 29th of each year. To qualify, VB CPS must meet all of the necessary assurances and conditions related to the use of Carl D. Perkins federal funding for TCE programs. The Perkins Grant requires localities to meet or exceed negotiated rates of performance. Those performance measures are academic achievement, measured by using SOL end-of-course exams for reading, English 11, and mathematics at the highest level; technical skill attainment measured using competency records and industry credentialing exams; secondary school completion measured using course completion rates, graduation rate, and transition rate, and that's to higher ed military or the workforce. ed military or the workforce; and non-traditional career preparation enrollments are measured using secondary, the secondary enrollment demographic form to VDOE, and completion is measured using course completion data. While the Office of Technical and Career Education continues to work with graduates to improve the postgraduate program completer survey response rates, Virginia Beach TCE students met or surpassed every performance measure required by the Virginia Department of Education while still in high school. In addition to reporting our performance data each year, the division is required to report on the activities for which Carl D. Perkins funds were used in the prior year. By doing so, we make 24 assurances that all mandates and regulations supported by the grant are met, and some examples of these include CTE students will be taught the same challenging academic proficiencies as all other students. Career and technical services programs and activities will reflect labor market needs and student interest. And career and technical student organizations will be an integral part of, and active part of each career and technical program. In the 2016-17 school year, cutting-edge career and technical instruction was delivered to students in grades 6 through 12, who filled 34,295 seats in our TCE classrooms across the city. While 2,248 members of the class of 2017 completed a TCE program of study, it's important to note that 4,429 members of the class graduated with one or more industry credential tied to career and technical education classes taken during their high school career. The Perkins Grant supports the critical programs leading to coveted industry skills funding equipment, software, training, testing, and curriculum development. This slide shows our local plan for spending grant funds for the 2018-19 school year. The Virginia Department of Education has not yet released official allocations for next year, and divisions are asked to prepare a budget based on level funding with the prior year. Our recommended budget based on estimated allocation is summarized in this chart. As stipulated by the legislation, up to 5% of the funds may be used for costs to administer the grant. This portion of the grant is allocated to test proctors and indirect costs. The indirect cost rate is calculated with a formula that equates approximately 2% of the entire grant. And these funds go to the VBCPS Office of Business Services, and the remaining 3% from this category is used to fund the proctors who deliver and administer our industry credential exams each year. The grant also specifies that localities use funds for equipment purchases and professional development. This is where we allocate the bulk of funding awarded by the state. Just over half a million is budgeted for equipment and instructional materials for our CTE centers and comprehensive schools. Funding for a portion of our industry credential exams also come from Carl D. Perkins funding. The estimated amount for industry credentials for next year remains steady at $70,000. The plan continues to support STEM initiatives and includes over $138,000 for professional development activities for teachers. Professional development efforts for the 2018-19 school year will focus on connecting middle and high school technical and career education faculty to professional conferences and courses recommended by industry partners on our General Advisory Council. The last item included on the local plan and budget is support for our co-curricular student organizations, including DECA, Educators Rising, FBLA, Skills USA, and TSA. As mentioned earlier in the assurances, career and technical student organizations are an integral and active part of each career and technical program. In summary, in the 2018-19 Carl D. Perkins Local Plan, we will continue to modernize classroom equipment and lab environments to prepare students for high-skill, high-wage careers in our region. Perkins funding will also support ongoing professional development for teachers, industry credentialing efforts, and co-curricular activities for students who may face barriers. This is important work, and we appreciate the support of the School Board of Virginia Beach and all of the support that you extend to our students and programs. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the plan.
Do we have any questions or comments from board members? Thank you, Dr. Lockett. Our next information items are the Policy Review Committee recommendations. Mrs. Lanetti?
Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Vice Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Spence, I'm Kami Lanetti. On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'll be presenting to you the recommendations tonight. First, on your recommendations is Bylaw 128. This has to do with committees and organizations. This is a School Board bylaw. To remember, our last meetings, we have passed the Citizens Advisory Committees. Part of the Citizens Advisory Committees, we have now designated, there will be a School Board liaison for them. So we needed to amend Policy 128 to make sure that you were appointing individual School Board members to them. So in Section E, 128, where it had School Board Standing Committees, we've now added "and" Citizens Advisory Committees and liaisons, and we've added a subsection 2 to this, and it has listed the School Board Advisory Committees. So as of, hopefully, the next couple months, if not, then no later than July 1st, we will be appointing liaisons to them. This policy, this bylaw change, will allow for the appointment of liaisons. Policy 418, section 4, has to do with the employee matters. This is employee dismissal and placing on probation on the recommendation of the Department of Human Resources. We've made certain changes under the classified procedures for dismissal under Section B. A would discuss the fact that before taking such action, the superintendent designated shall require the Chief Human Resource Officer designated to investigate matters by interviewing witnesses regarding misconduct, obtaining written statements from witnesses, and preparing written reports summarized in the fundings of some investigation. That came as a recommendation from the Human Resources Department. There is a small change having to do with probation and payment during that section, but that is the major change to Policy 418. Policy 529 has to do with awards and achievement, class rank, and honor designations. Again, Section 5 of your policies has to do with students. The change in this comes under the awards, under Section C, under C2. Specifically, you're discussing the fact that advanced studies program, I'm sorry, students complete their requirements for advanced studies diplomas with a grade point average 3.0 or better, and success of the complete college-level work will earn, and the nine transferable credits will earn advanced placements and dual enrollment credits on there. Under Subsection E, you've added class rank. Through the graduating class of 2021, students' grade point average and class rank will be competed for the following reasons. Step forth on the following page, you've decided, determine what those reasons will be: to determine honor graduates; to determine if the student is eligible for the diploma seal awarded by the Virginia Department of Education; communication to college admissions office and other agencies designated by the student or parent; and to determine the valedictorians and salutatorians for the graduating class. Subsection F is a new section that you've added also, having to do with honor designations. And this will be beginning with the ninth-grade class cohort of students, class of 2022, entering high school in the fall of 2018, which will be next year. Class rank will no longer be reported. Each high school will be provided with percentile ratings of grade point averages for estimating class rank for individual scholarships or military applications that require this information. High schools will not calculate a numerical class rank other than the percentile ratings. And principal or school designated will, shall provide colleges and universities with an explanation of the Latin honor system through the Virginia City Public Schools transcript profile. Listed under subsections, they'll disguise what those actual honor classifications are going to be, and those have been presented to you in prior workshops. Final subsection under F3 is the designation of valedictorian and salutatorian will no longer be utilized. Under Policy 672, again, on Section 6, has to do with students and curriculum instruction, student evaluation, and grading. The title will now be changed, remove the class rank. And then under Subsection B, under this particular policy, you'll be removing the entire subsection B and subsection C having to do with class rank, and those sections will no longer appear in the policy. That mirrors the prior policy that we just discussed. Policy 681, again, also under the section having to do with curriculum instruction. The only changes to this were minor scriveness changes and changes to the legal references in this particular policy that you'll see at the bottom of the page. Policy 715 has to do with distribution announcements of outside communications. Again, Section 7 has to do with how you deal with outside organizations that interact with the school division. Changes have been made to Subsection C under the distribution of literature. Part of the changes, instead of referencing families and citizens, we're referencing, I'm sorry, instead of referencing parents, we recognize that parents are not always the individuals that are caring for students. So there's now been change between communication to families sent home with students or distributed in digital electronic format, and we've removed some of the language having to do with the paper copies that used to go out. Further down in that particular paragraph, we've added section, "The Department of Meeting Communication will view the communication for compliance with applicable policy, regulation, or law in alignment with the educational environment. If approved for distribution, the communication will be provided to applicable principals and distributed to families." This came after some suggestions we've had where individuals or groups are producing information they want to go out to multiple schools on that, rather than each principal having to make a determination as to whether that's appropriate and complied. This way, it comes into the Department of Meeting Communication. Meeting Communication will make sure it's in compliance and then send it back out, and those communications then will go out to the appropriate schools for distribution to Those are the only changes and recommendations we're making at this time for the Policy Review Committee. We're prepared to answer questions on any of those.
Do we have any questions, comments? Mrs. Melnick?
I have some questions about class rank.
I will try to answer them, but I will defer to the appropriate personnel.
Do you want to? Here he comes. As Mrs. Stevens stated, if this policy change goes through, is there an opportunity for the class rank to be optional on transcripts?
That's a loaded question, not necessarily a question that we have discussed previously in a workshop setting, and I probably would not want to opine at the podium. I think that there is some additional dialogue that could potentially occur around that.
Okay. My second question, well, if you don't mind, just I have a few. Let's talk about weighted classes, and when those weighted opportunities start for students? Do we have students that earn high school credit in certain programs in sixth grade?
We do have students that earn credit in middle school.
Okay. Starting in sixth grade, perhaps a language, a mathematic?
Yes.
So if you are at ODS, or Plaza, or if you're an outlier, you can already start high school with how many more credits than the average student?
That's a challenge, because it varies student to student. And you mentioned an outlier. There's a possibility, I mean, I hear people behind me coming up with numbers.
Right.
But if we start throwing numbers out there, we might be able to give you one scenario, but there's another scenario out there that...
But they can. There are students that are earning high school credits in sixth grade.
Yes.
Right, and math, right. So what about a student who takes, how many AP classes are available in high school to the average student, not in an academy? How many AP classes can that student take?
Well, again, it's going to depend on what's offered in a particular building, based on staffing, based on interest. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 27 advanced placement courses are offered through the division.
So a student starting in ninth grade has 25 AP opportunities. So they would have to take all AP classes all four years. Are those weighted the same as Magnet and IB classes?
To address that question, Dr. Cashwell, I've got the list of weighted courses.
Yes, so I think you're asking are AP courses weighted? And yes, they are. And IB courses? Yes, they are.
Are the Magnet and IB courses weighted heavier than an AP class?
No. If it's weighted, the weight is the same. The list of courses that are weighted would be IB, AP, and certain identified courses within, for example, Ocean Lakes Math and Science Academy, et cetera. Have an identified list of those courses that have been through the weighted credit review process.
I'm trying to figure, I'm just trying to lay the groundwork for the playing field.
Sure.
And so basically, mathematically, it's almost impossible to catch up with kids who are in an academy, or those two academies, correct?
One of the things you may recall from the workshop this summer is that we presented academy student data with regard to where those students fell within the top percentages of the course, and we actually presented it backwards. We told you what the highest-ranked student would be that was not in an academy.
And I think at Ocean Lakes, it was about 46.
Well, let me make sure that I get that information right. I happened to bring it with me this evening, just in case the question came up. I have a feeling that Ocean Lakes was 27?
No. Okay.
Well, what we presented to you this summer with the class of 2016, so that, again, that wasn't, we didn't present to you the class of 2017.
And this is not going to be a student who maybe took classes for a couple of years and then dropped?
Well, no, actually, if they're no longer in the academy, that could be that particular student. But the highest-ranked student that was non-Math and Science Academy at Ocean Lakes with the class of 2016 was ranked 27th.
Okay. And that student could have been in the academy for a couple of years and dropped.
There is a possibility.
He or she could have had the benefit of all of those weighted classes, and then, okay. Okay, I'm good for right now. Thank you.
Mrs. McLeod?
My question is not on the grading part of it, so it might be wiser to do that topic and then let me go to mine. Mine is on the organization and School Board Committee stuff. So maybe you want to take one of these, since Mrs. Melnick started with that and come back to me?
We'll come back to you. We'll come back. Mrs. Manning?
Okay, so I want to talk about Policy 529 specifically. I guess the regulation applies to it a little bit. So I support the idea of the implementation of the Latin system. I like the Latin system. However, currently and under the new policy, 55% of all graduates are recognized with honors or allowed a designation. And I believe we should raise that bar and change where that begins. I believe students will then strive for this higher achievement. It has been mentioned that Wake County in North Carolina has implemented this system, so I kind of looked at what their designations were. And they begin cumulati at 3.75. And I did not see anything below that. You know, that was a quick glance at their site. We're beginning our honors awards at 3.0. I looked at what colleges are doing. Some Virginia colleges, ODU, UVA, Virginia Tech, they begin their honors designations with cumulati at 3.4. Ms. Weems College of Clemson University begins at 3.7. So I strongly believe we need to raise that bar on what we're defining as honor or lauding graduates. Also, I would like to reference the survey that we did, the parent and student survey. 74% of parents and 70% of students said that we should keep the designation and recognition of valedictorian and salutatorian, and I think we need to listen to them, and it's something that I fully support. Thank you.
Mrs. Weems?
Thank goodness I do not have to apply to get into Clemson University or any other university now, because it would be very difficult for me. Yeah, I think the Latin system is great. I don't have any problem with that. I do, though, want to ask my colleagues to consider that we do acknowledge the top two folks in each school with the highest two GPAs. I think that we're in the business of education, and I think that we need to acknowledge that extraordinary feat. Sometimes it's very close. I get that. We just got through, I mean, we acknowledge so many things... We just got through, I mean, we acknowledge so many things, like Mr. Kerwin said earlier. And even as a society, you know, my granddaughter and I watched the Olympics. I cannot even relate to a skier practicing for eight years to then do a two-minute ski and lose a medal by one one-hundredth of a second. But that's their thing. That's their fun, that's their goal, that's their target. I cannot relate to these students who are taking two AP classes, 10 AP classes, 25 AP classes. But that is who they are, and they are trying, this handful of students are really, at each school, are really trying, that motivates them to be the top person, the top GPA of that building. And I admire that. I was more of a jack-of-all-trades, so that's not me. But I don't think that we should be in a position to say, "Student A, that's your thing, that's what you want to dedicate your high school to, education." I think that you shouldn't have to do that, because I think there's too much stress, and I think you might enjoy a music class better, and you will be more well-rounded. I don't think that's my job to do that. Just like, I don't think, you know, sometimes, like my son, and we have athletes, you know, he wanted to be the best groundball defensive player, and he would practice, and everybody would say, "Why don't you do this?" And I would even say, "Why don't you do student council? Why don't you do this? Why don't you go to that dance?" No, I want to be in the backyard practicing. That was his thing. So I think these students, these handful of students who are trying for that, who aspire for that, and yes, they take a lot of hard classes, I think that that should be acknowledged. And whether we call it valedictorian, whether the principals call them up on stage, whether they do it when they hand out medallions, whether they acknowledge them from their seat, I just really hope my colleagues would consider that the principal can acknowledge this one person that has the highest grade point average in that school. And just do it the day of. Don't keep a tally. I mean, they might figure out how to do it amongst themselves. And again, that's their thing. That's that five or six students who love doing that. But just announce it at graduation, nobody knows, and just announce, "Student X, congratulations, because you had a GPA of so-and-so, and it was the highest in the school. Congratulations." I think that is an honor that we should not take away. It's unbelievable, and I don't want to take that away. So I'm fine with everything, but if we could just have in the policy that the principal can make an acknowledgement of those two, and again, if you say that it's ranking, I don't think acknowledging two people is then saying we're ranking again. And I just, I don't think that's going to hurt anything. And I know, actually, I just pulled it up briefly, there are some schools that add to your scholarship if you do get valedictorian. There were some that said their son got $8,000, won $2,000. They were saying it wasn't enough. And so I hate to, you know, take that opportunity away, too, if somebody gets valedictorian and then we don't name it, so they don't get the extra money. So I'm fine with everything if you would just consider acknowledging that unbelievable feat, that honor, because it is an educational thing, and it's what they want to do. And I admire them for that.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
If you, you can't go rankless and come up with a number one or a number two. I just, I don't see how you can get to that. The unhealthy, dysfunctional, competitive, which sounds like a good word, but the competitive is such that it creates a totally anti-collaborative environment. And in this environment, the students take course loads that are totally misaligned, not only to their college and career goals, but to their personal avocational interests, all to try to outpoint one another. I've had the opportunity for almost a decade now to coordinate the Brickley Scholar Program for the Virginia Beach Rotary Club. And in that, I'm interfacing four or five times a year with the top two, not grade point wise, because it's top two, and grade point is one of multi variables, but most of the students in that program are probably in the top 5%, and many are competitive for that number-one rank. And I think I shared with you at the workshop, we, you know, I threw this out to the students a few weeks ago, and they were pretty well split down the middle. You know, some said, "Yeah, no, we need to keep doing that." But there were a number that said, "I wish that was a race we'd never started. It hasn't been fun." And all of those things I mentioned played into their thought processes. And as I say, it was, I won't say that they were unanimous, but they were very, very split. And I just, and the idea of, we were saying that we would allow the, make it so that the principals could recognize that number one. I believe that was the term that was used earlier in our discussion. Let's remember, that's something that the principals were unanimous in saying that they did not want to do, because they thought it was the wrong thing to do in our buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Malnick?
So when we're comparing school districts, I just wanted to say that my nephew is a student at Wake County. And in Wake, they wait all of their honors classes, so just a regular honors class is weighted. We don't do that, correct? An honors English class is just like a regular English class, there's no additional weighting.
Correct.
Okay, so there's an unfair comparison there. When we did the survey, did we only survey middle school students, as they are the ones who will be affected by this? Or did this survey include high school students and parents who really, at this point, don't have a dog in the fight?
The survey was available, K-12.
Right, okay. So we had high schoolers weighing in that, you know, it's important right now, it's what they know right now. So what Mrs. Weems asked, is that an option? Or is this, you either do it and we're done, or is there a way to recognize? I would...
It's a policy decision, as far as I'm concerned, and as we've talked. I was asked very specifically before the break to query the high school principals with regard to support for 529 as written, and they are supportive of 529 as written.
As written.
I certainly understand the points that Ms. Weems made. What you have in front of you is 529 that went to Policy Review Committee and came out of Policy Review Committee and then was workshopped, I think, before and after Policy Review Committee.
When they have those medallion assemblies, what exactly are they recognizing? What...
And do you mean at the graduations?
So take Ocean Lakes, even before graduations, but just say, like, what are they recognizing when they choose the Dolphin Medallions, those winners? Then those are students that are not aware that they are receiving the award, is that correct?
Right. So if you're speaking about the medallions that are generally awarded at graduation, schools utilize a number of different factors when making that determination in terms of graduating seniors. It could be academic achievement, it could be athletic accomplishment, it could be outstanding community service, it may be a combination of all three. And I think one of the primary lines in all of the descriptors for all of the schools is, who have brought honor and distinction to the school through their actions? And so I think that that becomes one of the ways that schools recognize students at graduation.
What about the assemblies that occur before graduation? Do they get cords? Are there no cords? So no other distinctive medal or honor that they wear?
Well, in fact, there are a number of different distinctions that occur at each school with regard to achievement, with regard to participation in activities, with regard to service in terms of organizations, participation in academies. Further, I believe every one of our high schools has a type of awards recognition, either by grade level or whole school, to recognize outstanding achievement in a particular grade level, or to recognize outstanding achievement in any particular grade level, in a particular content area, for example. So there are a number of recognition scenarios that take place.
Okay. And just for the record, will you tell me again what Fairfax said when you called?
They were really surprised. They had a difficult time recalling what it felt like in making the transition, because it had been 10 years. There was a sense that, in some cases, they had to go back and kind of ask, well, who was around? Because it's not an issue for them at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in here just for a second, but at the National School Board Convention in San Antonio this past weekend, we had what was called a Virginia Breakfast. It's the only time that Virginia actually gets together. And Ms. Riggs and I, we found people from Fairfax, because, not that we didn't take your word, but we just wanted to talk with other school board members from Fairfax about this issue, knowing that they had done this at least 10 years ago. And honestly, they looked at us like, "You're just now doing this?" I didn't want to think that we were behind in any way, but that's the way they looked at us. They were like surprised that we were just now getting around to coming up with this. And it was mainly because they had the same things that we have going on now. They went to this mainly because they had academies where they had students who were not able to achieve that status, even though they had higher than a 4.0. They might have had a 4.5, 4.6, and they still were not the valedictorian, salutatorian, and they were not even in the top of their class, not in the top 10% at that stage. So that's one of the reasons why they went to it to begin with. They started, they said, in their governor's school, and then it just, it was, they was like, "Well, we did that for one year," and then the next year, everybody went to it, because they realized how much better and beneficial it was for their students. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there, that, you know, we did talk with school board members from Fairfax, and their suggestion was, "Get on board with this. This is what's, you know, what's best." Ms. Weems?
Yeah, I'll have to respectfully disagree with some comments, because I do think that you can eliminate ranking of 500 students that will perhaps be detrimental to them getting in a certain college, because they're not the top 10%. So I think that's totally different than acknowledging the person who has the one highest and second highest grade point average. We have first chair in music, we have sports, and you said, I mean, Mr. Kever basically said, "We have a distinction and acknowledgement for so many things. We have it for you've gone to school every single day since kindergarten through 12th grade." I mean, that probably entices some kids that really want to do that. Again, I can't relate it with my children, to go to school when they really shouldn't, because they might be a little sick. Okay, you know, so we have a distinction for almost so many things, but now we're not going to have a distinction for this educational excellence. I just don't agree with that. And I think that we can eliminate the ranking, like the speaker said earlier, that's going to hurt, this is not going to hurt the valedictorian or the top two. To name them that day is not going to hurt them, it's not going to hurt the people who are in the highest Latin category, because they're still in the highest Latin category. So this will not hurt anybody. This will just acknowledge that great educational feat. It's not going to hurt anybody. How could it hurt anybody? Now, if we say we have, again, this group of four or five students at every school who are going to be so competitive, they're going to do it anyway, whether you acknowledge it, because it's in their DNA, just like athletes are going to compete. It's just in their DNA. And so, again, if my colleagues would just really please consider that we just, we have a distinction for this, it's not going to hurt those two, and it's not going to hurt the third, fourth, or fifth one, because they're still going to be in that percentage so that they can send off to their college. Please don't take away distinguishing those top two kids that have done so much for 12 years in the world of academia.
Thank you, Ms. Weems. Ms. Riggs?
I was just going to add that one of the school board members that we talked to from Fairfax was, in fact, a school board member that had been there for a long time. So she was involved in when they changed that, and she said that that was not, had not been a problem, so.
Ms. Mc... Well, before we move back to that, I just want to say one thing.
I have a comment now.
Oh, you want to say something about this?
Enough comments have been made that I now have a comment.
Okay, very good.
And then I'd like to be next on the list for the other.
Okay.
I absolutely, completely disagree with Mr. Edwards tonight. Students are competitive, as Ms. Weems has said. It is in our nature, in all of us. We always want to strive to excel. So my vote on this has totally been swayed tonight by this conversation. I'm perfectly good with the rankings, the four different categories of that. I now would encourage to leave valedictorian and salutatorian as being acknowledged as the top two ranks. Class GPA, not rank, lose that out of my top, just to acknowledge the top two GPAs as part of it. So I've totally been swayed tonight. I was actually at, when Mr. Kerwin made his comments tonight, I was actually at the event where it was a person from the community that says, "We acknowledge the best teacher assistant, we acknowledge the best reading," you know. So why wouldn't you go and give that acknowledgement? So I think, I believe that what Mrs. Weems has said tonight, it doesn't take away, we're not ranking them. Obviously, once you announce the two top GPAs, you do know who number one and two were, but by then, they've been accepted to college. In fact, most of them have been accepted to college before they ever know what the actual final GPA is. My son received accolades and scholarships just because he went to Princeton, an IB program, got $10,000 in scholarships a year to University of South Carolina, and they didn't even know if he was going to pass the IB exams or get the IB diploma. He didn't know that till July, which is why we don't have the ceremony till December. So I'm digressing just a little bit. So I just truly believe that the competitive nature is going to be there. They're going to continue to take, those type of students are going to continue to take the extra AP classes, because they want to get in the top dog school, they want to get into Princeton, they want to get into the other schools that require them to have a 5.17924. So I don't think that, at that point, that there's anything wrong. Maybe you're, and I do have a question for you, Mr. Kever. You asked your principals a very straightforward question. Can you support 5-29? And their answer options were yes and no. But did they give you any feedback? Because if I was a principal, I'd say, "Yes, I could support this." But did you receive any feedback to help us come to our conclusion here?
Some did.
Okay.
Some provided feedback.
And was any of it regarding the valedictorian or salutatorian, or just, would you share some of that feedback?
I believe at least one person said, "If by policy compelled to do so, we would recognize the top students, the top GPA."
Did anyone...
I think the challenge with this scenario is the, are the two terms, are the terms of valedictorian and salutatorian. And the idea that that carries a particular recognition status, not necessarily with simply the top GPA, but also then the opportunity to address the graduates. And so historically...
Historically, yes.
I understand that.
Yeah.
However, the practice in all of our schools, all of our high schools, for as long as I can recall, so prior to '88, I can't tell you, but between '88 and today, the Val and Sal have spoken at graduation, because they were Val and Sal.
Right. And we could certainly change that policy. We could make that, we could put it in policy that it does not require that the Val and Sal get to do the speech. As I reminded you, in 1986, I was not the valedictorian nor the salutatorian. I spoke at my graduation.
I would not suggest that we put graduation participation in policy.
Right.
As the person that works with your high schools, I don't necessarily think that you want to do that.
So it's not currently in there. So what you're saying is, maybe to not call it Val and Sal, but instead, that those would be acknowledged, the top two GPAs would be acknowledged, not necessarily calling them Val and Sal, but to just be acknowledged.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to interject here. I'm okay with keeping our honor levels to start at 3.0, by the way. I just want to let people know that. I just want to let people know that. I'm, I don't want to change that because I don't feel that we're dropping our standards for honor graduates, but we're just distinguishing the levels of achievement. And the Latin honor system allows us to distinguish and give a better form of recognition to students who've, who've achieved higher than a 3.0 but may not be the valedictorian and salutatorian. Currently, everybody from 3.0 up to whoever the salutatorian and valedictorian are are just considered honors. And I love the fact that we may go to this system now and, and will actually be able to award and show achievement for those who maybe have a 3.7. They need to be able to show that they've worked a little harder than a 3.0. And I like, I like the honor system, the Latin honor system that we're going to. I've struggled personally with whether to, we should eliminate salutatorian and valedictorian. I've personally struggled with this. And I haven't fully decided, but I'm leaning tonight toward saying that we would keep valedictorian and salutatorian. I'm leaning that way heavily tonight because, but, because they would just be the number one and number two. But I don't think we should continue with class rank throughout the rest. I know, I know, I know. Once we get there, we get there, but, but I feel like, you know, that is something, that is, that is a level of achievement that is something to strive for, so.
What is it, GPA? Mrs. Rye?
Okay. So I, I think there's been enough discussion that we'll be ready for a vote the next time, but I want to reiterate again. And we can respectfully disagree, but going rankless, in the view of many, means going rankless. And so you don't rank, you don't rank a number five, you don't rank a number 10, and you don't rank a number one. And so for me, it's a matter of consistency and it's for all the reasons that we've set forth about why we began this discussion last summer. Just a reminder about the hodgepodge of programs we have and the, the, we just have kids who are going here and there for these, this program and that program and even within the same building. So everybody doesn't have access to the same courses. And so it's not a question of, you know, not recognizing, kudos to everybody in their respective programs for doing their darndest, but there, it's just not a level playing field. And, and it is the reason why Fairfax 10 years ago came to this realization as well. And so it still comes down to-
On academy, you ever get that medallion?
Or the, the child going to the governor's school or here or there. And, and so if we go rankless, we go rankless, but we still are recognizing academic achievement. And I'm speaking as a former valedictorian. I feel I need to say that publicly. And I have, in earnest, thought this through since last summer. And my mother was a valedictorian. And it was just a different world 40 years ago. In my high school, it was, you know, the same courses were available to everybody. And that doesn't mean everybody had the aptitude for maybe calculus, but it, in theory, it was, it wasn't denied to anybody. And so it was a level playing field. And I, it became apparent to me, once we moved here and my children were already at the secondary level or entering the secondary level, that this great collection of programs we had was wonderful, but it did create this, this uneven, and I don't want to say inequity or unfair. It's just an une, it's just, you're comparing apples and oranges is what you're doing to attempt to rank all 500 seniors under a system that they're, they're just involved in so many different programs. And again, half of them, some of them are leaving the building each day and some of, some of it's within the same building. So that, that's, that's where this all started last summer. And there's been a lot of earnest discussion since. And I think the fact that we are, we're not changing the rules for those in school now. I think we can still address the one parent's concerns separately because that's not a policy issue, what we do, what we do and don't report on transcripts. But there was thought into why we are delaying this too, because we don't want to change the rules of the game for the students presently in school. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Dr. Spence, and I, you want to weigh in on this? I'm gonna ask you to weigh in on this at this point.
Just briefly. This might, this might come as some surprise, but I, I think there's, there's solutions in the middle here. I, I don't have, my, my recommendation is, particularly around the policy itself, is that I don't have a, I don't, I think the policy as it stands is a good policy with the designation of Val and Sal not being utilized. That said, I also happen to agree that I think there's a place to recognize the top performing student. And I, I think that can be done a couple of different, a couple of different ways. I think there are other policies that direct the development of regulation. This one doesn't happen to have that in there. This one could have that in there, directing the development of regulation about how students will be recognized in high school graduations. And then this could become a regulatory conversation, which I know is sometimes of concern because, you know, some rogue superintendent may grab hold of that. But the, the reality is, you could be fairly specific to say, to include the recognition of the student with the top GPA or something akin to that. And that would allow you to then create a regulation to that effect, but it would also honor what Mr. Keever and his principals have said, which is that they like the policy as written. They're concerned about the recognition of Val and Sal and how that has traditionally then become kind of the, the competing piece of who's gonna get to speak at graduation. It would eliminate that conversation and would, as we talked about in workshop, as Mr. Keever talked about, allow for the development of regulation through a process that would involve the students that'll be impacted and the high school principals and so that they could really help drive and develop that regulation that, but then again, you know, and I want to remind the board, of course, there is always board oversight of regulation, not, not approval, but oversight through the superintendent. So I feel like there's middle ground. I feel like, given a little bit of time, prior to bringing it back to action, we could give you some language and policy that might give you the opportunity to direct that.
Okay. Mrs. Malnuck?
Oh, Dr. Spence said exactly what I was gonna say. Exactly.
Mrs. Weems?
Good? Miss, okay, Ms. MacLeod?
Let's talk Policy 1.28. Mr. Keever, you may sit down. So this is about the committee structure. And so because it was just for the liaison part, I know we've got, you know, four pages and it was, really had to do with the liaison, but it caused me to reread everything in this section.
Are you sending this back to Policy Review?
Nope. Nope, I just want to bring up a few things. I have one question specifically. So under assignments, I just want to notice there are nine different reasons as to how committees can be assigned to a person, things to be considered. And number three for assignments, you go from one, equitable distribution, and you go to four, which is members' training, education, or experience with the committee or with the topic of the committee, continuity of service and historical knowledge. But then you get to nine and it's just, and other good and just reasons for the why. And so I just want to point out that I would like us, I'm questioning nine in there for other good or just reasons, because I was removed from a few committees this year where I had been an executive director of a sister city program, but no longer on that committee. Additionally, when it comes to serving on, as choosing the, and I'll actually get to that, but I just want to point that out. I want us to follow the policy, but I question if nine, like, almost null and voids the other eight, because it really, just the chairman can just choose whatever they want. So if the policy committee would like to look at that, that would be just fine with me. But as I move on, regarding committee chairman, which is number six on this, it goes on in how you should, that the committee chairman should, will be chosen by the members of the committee unless otherwise designated. And it gives why things should be considered as well. You know, the needs of the group, the expressed interest, the experience of. And so I just want to bring up that committee chair, committees are supposed to be chosen unless otherwise noted, which then takes me to number six under C for the stating committees, which includes the Joint School Board and City Council Committees, which lists A, B, and C, which, one of which is a CIP Modernization Review Committee. And what I realize is that the committee itself was to have chosen the chair because it's not specified otherwise. However, this year, our chairman of the board actually chose that committee chair, removing me from the chair position. And when you look at the experience and the knowledge, I'd served on that committee since I was involved with the Facility Steering Committee. So I bring that up because that's not noted. If that is supposed to be a specified thing, that wasn't noted. And so I just wanted to bring that to, to the policy committee's attention. Jumping back a little bit, and I apologize, Mrs. Lynetti, is that when we list all of our committees here, we've gone through and most of them, we're switching Policy Review Committee to be from two members to three members, and most of them are three. But in the Legislative Committee, we put a minimum of two, but we actually have three. So I figure we might want some consistency, two, but not more than three. And I bring this up because many of these committee meetings that we go to, we have more than the, the number of designees attending these meetings. Sometimes they're up to five, almost getting to a majority of people from the board attending those. So I just wanted us to caution. I know they're, they're stated and I know that many times, the unofficial members of the board who attend the meetings are told, you're here to observe and that is all. But I just wanted to put that caution out there. So the one recommendation I do have is that the Legislative Committee is matched here in regard to saying, you know, minimum of two, not more than three, because all of the rest of them are mentioned three.
Isn't that the same thing as three?
No, it says a minimum, the Legislative Committee consists of a minimum of two school board members.
Okay, but we have three.
Yes, but it doesn't maximize it.
Didn't we vote on that a couple of days ago?
No, we just talked about, well, yes, we did. But I know that's not a part of the policy. We said, you all wanted to change it to five, and we agreed three should be what it was. But, so should that be reflected?
It was a long time ago, somewhere between the seven to 10-year range, there was a concern that certain individuals wanted to be on it.
Mm-hmm.
And so we expanded it.
It was in the last two years.
So we knew, we needed to, that, that specifically was voted for that reason.
Right. But, so we have said that. So my only suggestion is on the Legislative Committee to say, minimum of two, not to be more than three. But if we really did vote, we need to look at that decision where we, we might've just been voting not to change it to five and allow it to three.
That's right. That's what we did.
So I don't know if that changes your policy or not, but that would be a good thing to look into that vote. Thank you, Mrs. Malnuck, for bringing that up.
It's when you adopt your, your committee, that's when you're making your final decision. That's when you vote on who you're putting in there. So you can do it then, but when you adopt that, usually in July or again in January, you do that, lest you make your decision then.
So to say, well, you don't have to do that every time? You made us, if you stick it on the policy that it's minimum of two, no more than three, then that way you would have, wouldn't have to have that vote every year? Unless you would believe that would be to cut your nose off despite your face.
No, actually, what happens is your proposed slate of committee members, if you listed five people and y'all voted in five, then you would have five on the committee. If you only listed two, just a matter of somebody moving, moving to change, it's whatever your recommendation is. So you're not changing the number, it's just whoever you vote to put on the committee at that time.
So-
Okay. So my recommendation to the policy committee is to change that wording where it says minimum of two, no more than three. That's all. Thank you.
legislative committee.
What is your recommendation exactly to change it? So that it says three?
So the wording, the wording says, minimum of two, no more than three school board members on the Legislative Committee.
Right. Is there anyone else that would like to interject? Any opinions or suggestions on any of these bylaws or policies? Okay, seeing none? Thank you, Ms. Lynetti. Do we have any standing committee reports? Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Short and sweet, the Legislative Committee met this afternoon. Will meet again on May 8th. We are still working out issues with our VSBA legislative item proposals that we will have to you shortly, I hope. Thanks.
Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, that concludes our formal meeting for this evening. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on non-agenda items this evening?